I'd like to call to order the April 28th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, let the roll call show that Councilmember Dilg and Councilmember Bogart are both absent this evening, and I'll look for a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to excuse Councilwoman Lisa Dilg.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now I'll look for a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Bogart. Councilmember Hanson?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Thad Bogart for his absence today.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move on to approval of the city council meeting minutes for April 14th, 2025. I'll move one minute. Thank you.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the April 16th budget workshop. Councilmember Hanson?
I'll move the minutes as presented.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that particular item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no bills for the evening. We'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Hanson?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to tonight's consent agenda. And on tonight's consent agenda, we have the application for the Memorial Day Parade, the application for ladies' night out road closure, the farmer's market food truck rallies, and a resolution for Mental Health Awareness Month, May of 2025. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And just to talk a little bit, just a minute about the mental health awareness. It's a resolution to, it's a great reminder about increasing the awareness of and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for people that require We will open the floor now for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council, please come to the podium. You have a two-minute time limit. We have open comment, public comment, in two locations during the session here. Please state your name and address for the city clerk, if you would.
Hey, y'all. My name's Kenneth Barnhill. I live at 264 Winchester Street, South Lyon. And my comment this evening was the preamble to the charter. And I wanted to keep the first four sentences, you know, just on everybody's mind, like we should as citizens in the city. "We, the people of South Lyon, grateful to Almighty God for the blessing of freedom and pursuant to authority granted by the Constitution and laws of the state of Michigan in order to secure the benefits of self-government and to provide the public peace and health for safety of persons and property to hereby ordain and establish this charter for the city of South Lyon." I thank you.
Seeing no more public comment, we'll close public comment at this point, and we'll move on to a discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I just had a couple of things for you tonight. The first is the opening day of the farmer's market outdoor season is this Saturday. From nine to two, we'll be having the market, and then every Saturday until the last one in October. So, we're very excited for the opening of the market this season. We're expecting about 65 vendors on average each week, so it's looking like it's going to be another great year for the market. The lights on the trees that were removed for the tree trimming are just about all reinstalled. They may have to go out tomorrow and finish doing a few lights on the trees, but those are all pretty much done now. So, we should be getting those back on here shortly. And then, a quick update on the bike racks. They are going to be powder coated soon by the suppliers, so hopefully, once that's done, we can get them and get them installed. So, before the end of the season, when people will actually be using the bikes. And then, the quick update on the EV chargers, those have not yet been hooked up by DTE. I'm still unsure when they're going to be out there. They kind of move at their own pace, so hopefully soon, though. But yeah, that's it for me, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions, or DDA Director Mack? Councilmember Kivell?
I was curious about what the process for the finish on the businesses that want to end up doing a new facade. How is that run? Oops.
So, how do they?
You said last, at our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, that you guys had decided to just do one project a year, correct?
Oh, as far as the funding levels for the facade program, is that what your question's about, or how someone would apply?
Quite honestly, I thought it was supposed to end up being a facade thing, and you just wanted to end up focusing on one project a year.
Yeah, so, the way we had it set up previously was a max of $2,500 per storefront, and that wasn't enough of an incentive to actually get people to want to do something. So, we changed it to $10,000. Didn't change the budget amount, but previously, we didn't have anybody applying for the program because it wasn't enough to make a difference in a project. So, we changed the funding amount from 2,500 for four different projects to one $10,000 project. And we did approve an application last, or I guess the start of this fiscal year, we're waiting on that to be completed, and we've gotten another one submitted last week as well, and then there's additional interest, too. So, yeah, it's just a little bit more of a financial incentive for people to do facade work. We just can't do as many.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Hanson?
I was just curious, how are things going with the Bi-Michigan Now Festival? Do you have an idea as far as how many folks maybe have registered for the event yet, or?
I don't know what they're at, as far as registrations go. We're doing some of the things that we, you know, promised to do on our end, but yeah, as far as I know, things are going well, so.
Okay. Figured I'd ask, thanks.
Yeah, no, I can reach out and see if they can give me a number.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Thanks a lot, Nate.
Thank you.
Move on to the fire chief's report tonight, and tonight, we have Captain Conrad in for Chief Thorington.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. This is an update of incidents to date. It's 448, 14 EMS calls, two assist invalids, two building fire, one smoke investigation. We had an arcing wire outlet in one of the middle schools, carbon monoxide investigation, three public assistance, two canceled en route, and a burning complaint. And if you probably are aware, we had a structure fire recently that was right on the border of South Lyon and Green Oak, in Green Oak, and our fire department saw the smoke before Green Oak was even dispatched to it and came upon it. We had a great turnout from our department, including a couple cadets that worked very hard, and Brighton Fire Authority called us to thank us for having such a great cadet program, and they were really impressed by their work ethic, so that's all I have for you today.
That's really nice of them to follow up like that. Any questions for Captain Conrad? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Captain, here's my question. I saw the Facebook post regarding that fire, and somebody had put in the post that, you know, "Don't worry, South Lyon, because Novi was on alert that if anything would happen, we would be covered." My question was, why Novi and why not Lyon Township?
Lyon Township was actually called to that fire as well.
Oh.
So, that happens sometimes when it's a large fire. They bring in a lot of departments, so we reach out to the further departments to cover us. We have a card that tells us exactly who moves where when we have fires like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hanson?
Just a quick comment. Some of the staff was in some of the area neighborhoods flushing out the hydrants and whatnot, you know, springtime activities and whatnot. Just wanted to thank them for their efforts, especially on the weekend. I know the kids got a kick out of seeing it being done, and they had a little bit of a crowd gathering, watching all the excitement, so definitely wanted to thank them for, you know, being out there and their decorum as well.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great time to interact with the public, too. The kids love it.
Thanks a lot, Captain.
Thank you.
Move on to the police chief report with Chief Baki this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I've got a few things for you tonight. We purchased under this budget new optics for our rifles. They were sighted in, and we were able to qualify with our rifles, so those are all done and complete, and they're equipped now onto our new, or the optics are on there right now. We conducted two interviews for the position of police officer. One, we had a ride-along come in the other day, and it looks like we're going to start a background on him, so, and I'll keep you posted on that, how it goes. And good news is that we did get something from MCOS in reference to our grants that we got for our new cadets going into the academy. It shows that they were approved for $20,000 each, so that's $60,000 total for the new cadets. They're slated to go in, their orientation is May 1st, and then they'll start the academy at Washington on May 5th. That's a four-month program. They'll be out in about September 5th is when they get out, and then they go in their FTO program. So, we're excited about that. It's great that we're going to get those funds to help out with the costs. We had drug takeback on Saturday, had a good turnout. That, plus the last six months, today, I dropped off just over 222 pounds of unwanted drugs to the DEA for destruction. So, that was a good showing there for getting those off the street, and that's all I got. Does he have any questions?
Any questions for Chief Baki? And just for the public's benefit, chief, that drug takeback program, basically, people can show up Monday through Friday and take advantage of bringing things into the police department. You don't have to wait for those special dates.
Correct. Yeah, it's just awareness that the DEA likes to do, and then that gives us time to then take all the drugs that we acquired and then take it over to them, so they can destroy them for us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No unfinished business this evening, so we'll move on to new business number one, which is the resolution authorizing the request for reimbursement from Oakland County for the West Nile Fund.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm actually bringing you to try and get us some money back. The topic tonight is resolution to request reimbursement from Oakland County West Nile Fund. Oakland County received and approved our West Nile virus project plan for the year of April, for this year, April 3rd, 2025. We provide insect repellent for residents and apply mosquito larvaicide to our city catch basins. Council will need to adopt the resolution. The resolution authorizes the reimbursement request, authorizing the reimbursement request must be submitted to Oakland County Health Division by June 13th, 2025. The invoice and proof of payment must be submitted to the Oakland County Health Division by August 2025, not '24, for reimbursement allocation. Materials attached, you'll see the plan to Oakland County regarding the city's program, the later, the letter, letter for reimbursement, invoice for the briquettes, possible course of action, approve resolution or not approve resolution.
Councilmember Moser?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution reimbursement, excuse me, from Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund in the amount of $1,517.36.
I'll support. We have a motion from Councilmember Moser, second from Councilmember Kivell. Do we have any further discussion regarding this topic? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this, please?
Kivell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Move on to new business number two. Award the sidewalk replacement project to Luigi Ferdinandini &amp; Son Cement Company.
No matter how many times you read it, it's hard to say. Explanation of the topic would be, the sidewalk replacement project is being set up to replace any sidewalks that have been heaved or misaligned due to roots or from city trees. The contractor will be directed in which areas to address, which the city, with the city hosting many events this year in the DDA, we plan on working in and around the DDA. The contractor will be removing and replacing 200 flags and misaligned sidewalks that are creating trip hazards. They will also be removing and replacing any tree roots that are causing the problems. The contractor will also be performing all restoration. This was not a budget, this was not budgeted for this fiscal year, and we're asking for a budget amendment for GL account number 101-441-974. Supporting documents would be the quotations from Luigi Ferdinandini &amp; Son, possible course of action, award, not award, sidewalk replacement project for Luigi Fernando &amp; Son Cement Company for $59,950 from GL account number 101-441-974.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to award the sidewalk replacement project to Luigi Ferdinandini &amp; Son Cement Company for the cost of $59,950 from GL account number 101-441-974.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell. Do we have any further discussion regarding this issue? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, it was a little bit unclear to me exactly, I understand you're going to do a replacement in the downtown area, but are you not going to do any of the subdivisions like last year?
Yes, I have budget money for, after July 1, to finish Hidden Creek subdivision and then move further north, yes. This was kind of a spur-of-the-moment thing. They reached out to us and said, "Hey, you have anything before July 1?" Because everybody's waiting for that date in municipalities. And it kind of spurred something, especially having the bigger event coming in. With all the events we have, I'm like, whoa. And I talked with Patricia and Paul, and they thought it was a great idea, so that's why we're here today.
Yeah, actually, this is a good idea, but I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Because Hidden Creek wasn't finished last year.
Correct. That's where we're going. I'll be back here in July 1 with the same thing for next year's program.
Because, boy, am I hearing it, you know? But anyway, all right, so now I can at least let them know that, yes, we will be finished.
Absolutely.
And this is something, and then, if I know of some places in the downtown area, actually, I've tripped on one or two areas right, I think they're on East Liberty, I can get you the address, and I don't think they've been repaired.
Okay.
What do I do? Give you?
You can. East Liberty is one of the areas that we are going to be walking to. We're going basically 10 Mile, Pontiac Trail first, to get the core, and then working to get that, you know, we only have so many that we can do, but we're going to walk the block basically around the core. If we can, we can do more, we're going to keep going until we get basically everything surrounding the downtown area.
Yeah, because this is just off of Pontiac Trail, and it's just south of 10 Mile.
Okay.
So, it's over by the bike shop.
That is one area we're definitely looking.
Okay, perfect, and you probably got the spot. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kivell?
Just a light one. Do you guys ever consider jacking some of those, the flags? I mean, I see so many that are just like a half an inch high, and, you know, if there was, you could bore and then just kind of lift it up a little bit and move to the next thing.
We've, we looked at, in the past, we looked at that. It wasn't cost efficient. Also, if you mudjack one that's had a tree root, how soon are you going to be back to fix it again? We have looked at it in the past. It's something I could look at again if you'd like me to, but in the past, it definitely wasn't cost effective to do it that way.
If it's not efficacious, I mean, there's no point in going there, but I know that it's a lot less of a struggle than tearing everything out and going through the whole thing.
One other project we are looking at is the concrete cutter coming in, too, for smaller ones, actually come in and cut those down. It could buy us a year, it could buy us five years, you don't know with, you know, the tree root growth, but it's all, it's one of those things, you know, if you pull the roots out, you've bought yourself quite a few years.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Right.
But we also have to be careful how much we take out, because we don't want to kill a tree either, but.
Well, I mean, all along our corridor, you guys have your, we're cut out. Thank you.
Okay, we have, like I said, a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell. City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us a roll call, and a roll call vote on this one, please.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Jeff. And now, we'll look for a motion for the budget amendment. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget to increase the general fund and Department of Public Works expenditures for GL account number 101-441-974 from $160,000 to $219,950.
Okay.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell. Do we have any further discussion on this topic? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Move on to new business number three, residential cross connection control program.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, in accordance with the requirement set forth by Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, EAGLE, and Part 14 of PA 39, which is known as the Safe Drinking Water Act, South Lyon has implemented a cross connection program to protect the public water system, supply system. EAGLE is more stringent in enforcing the inspection of residential accounts in addition to the commercial and industrial accounts. The current program involves the inspection of 244 commercial and industrial accounts. The city of South Lyon Water Department requests the hiring of HydroCorp for the purpose of performing residential cross connection inspections. The city of South Lyon currently has 3,699 residential accounts. Services provided by HydroCorp under this agreement will include inspections, surveys, program administration, answering telephone calls, preparation of cross connection reports. Under this agreement, HydroCorp will perform a minimum of 960 inspections throughout a two-year contract period, 480 per year. The contract total for two years is $94,519.20. The amount of $46,332 is budgeted for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, underlying item 592-556-802 contractual services. I have supporting documents attached, is the service agreement from HydroCorp. Possible courses of action would be to approve or not approve the hiring of HydroCorp to perform residential cross connection inspections for the amount of $46,332 from line item 592-556-802 contractual services.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive city of South Lyon Code of Ordinances approval for purchases or contracts, competitive bidding for purchases or bidding because no advantage to the city will result from competitive bidding in this case.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, a second by Councilmember Kurtzwell. Do we have any further discussion regarding this particular issue? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
You know, I voted to waive the bidding, but I want to hear some facts from you on the record as to why HydroCorp is your selection.
If I could, I can give you a detailed summary of what we're doing here. This is a huge program for the city, and I'll get to that in this summary, if you'll allow me to. Go ahead.
Yep, feel free.
First of all, what is a cross connection? First and foremost, it's simply an arrangement of piping through which non-podable water or other contaminants could enter the potable water supply and contaminate that water supply. It can be through reversal of flow. So, under normal conditions, we're under pressure continually. The city has a 65 to 70 PSI throughout the city. So, how can we have reversal of flow if we continue with that pressure? There's two circumstances that that can happen. One is back pressure. That is, pressure in a customer's home, building, business would exceed the pressure of our water system. That is usually due to booster pumps, or boiler systems, or some other process within that building. The other is back cyclage. That is due to a significant pressure loss in our water system, in our supply system. That could be due to a major water break, a large fire structure, or catastrophic failure at our water plant. Some examples of cross connections that you may have in your home or what we see out in the city businesses. We generally see hoses submerged in buckets full of contaminants, hoses dangling in a laundry tub that's full of water or laundry. We also see in slop sinks and pools. We also have irrigation lawn systems. That's a big cross connection also. Every home, or most homes, have an irrigation system in the city. We have boilers, not a lot of boilers in homes, but they need to be protected. Water-powered sump pumps, those are a new thing, and those need to be protected. That is a cross connection in most homes that have those. Water softeners, every home, or 90% of the homes here in South Lyon have a water softener. There is a discharge pipe or a line, usually it's a flexible tube, and those are directly connected either into a drain in the basement or a sewer line. That also is a cross connection. So, these are unprotected cross connections, like the ones I just mentioned, can pose a serious health risk and can contaminate our water system. So, these cross connections, and the risk can be eliminated by a backflow preventer, so some kind of device to stop that backflow prevention. It is required by the building code, and sometimes, when people are moving into homes, they're not complete, they don't have the softener, or they're adding a power, water-powered sump pump, and so they don't see that when they do their final inspection. So, the importance of the cross connection program is clear, but implementing is quite a task, and it's going to take a while, and it's going to be somewhat difficult, obviously, getting in each and every home. I believe with HydroCorp's expertise, public awareness, tools they have, extensive knowledge, we will be able to accomplish our shared goals in getting this implemented. Currently, HydroCorp services many communities, local communities in this area, Norville Township, City of Norville, City of Plymouth, City of Brighton, Whitelake Township, and City of Howell. I've contacted several of these cities, and each and every one has nothing but praise for HydroCorp's services, so that makes me feel a little better. There are, there are many companies out there that provide a cross connection program, but it's just the program. We need feet on the ground. We need somebody that can help us implement this from start to finish, and I believe HydroCorp, this is what they do, and they're very good at it and very knowledgeable. They're the only ones that we found that do it from start to finish. We found other companies that will provide the programs, but that would entail us to go into homes, do our inspections with a city employee. So, we looked at hiring possibly a city employee to do just that, but under the contract, those employees, or whoever we hire, would be an operator and would have other duties. We couldn't just separate that into a separate entity. So, that's why we decided to go with HydroCorp. If you look at... If you look at some of the, the work they've done, what the services they provide, they're summarized in that statement of work under that 1.1. If I could go, some of the relevant services I'd like to point out would be, number one, updating South Line's cross connection ordinance, which hasn't been updated since 2008. They'll look at Section 94-65 in the ordinance and they'll see if we need to update that. And that is the cross connection program in the ordinance. And we'll also look at Section 94-66, which is the enforcement of the cross connection. So, they'll help us update it and establish a new ordinance if it's necessary. We also need to update South Line's cross connection program. That was 2008 and hasn't been updated since. So, they will help us, they have all the tools to do that, they have the template, and they're very familiar with Eagle. So, that will have to be passed by Eagle. Once that's done, we can move forward. So, I think most importantly is HydroCorp's ability to provide the program overview videos. They have social media posts, they have special notices that they'll, they'll give out, and the education and public awareness tools that they have. I believe educating the residents on a cross control program and is very important, kind of like what I'm doing right here. I think it is instrumental for this program to succeed. So, once, once we finish with our ordinances, if we need to update them along with that cross connection program, we'll move forward into the residential interior surveys. So, the surveyors or inspectors will be provided by HydroCorp. They go through their, their training and they also will be required to have background checks. So, all these cross connection surveys will be scheduled via online portal or phone calls. They're not going to go door-to-door and knock and at, you know, any day or time. They'll all be scheduled. They'll last approximately 30 minutes. Inspectors will not go into kitchens, they will not go into bathrooms, they will not go into bedrooms or any private areas. Most of the inspections will take place in a utility room where you'll see the softener there, the heat, heating unit, HVAC, they'll look at that, boilers. So, they'll stay mostly contained to that area. They'll do a walk around, they'll look at the hose bibs to see if any hose are connected without a vacuum breaker, approved vacuum breaker. They'll look at the sprinkler systems where those will need to be tested and approved. We'll start every five years. So, this program will probably take seven to eight years to complete. And it's never-ending. So, after seven and eight years, you'll continue to do these. It's a, it'll be a living document, so you continually to re-inspect each home. And so, until we're done, if it ever is complete. So, if we don't like what we're seeing from HydroCorp, which I don't believe that'll happen, we'll be able to discontinue after the first two years. So, I guess that, that completes my cross connection 101. If you have any questions, I hope that answered a lot of them.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, did that answer your question as to why he was looking for the sole provider there?
Well, it sounds like the, what it is, is that they have an array of skills that the city is looking for that not other competitors would be able to provide. So, there's a range of skills here, it's not just one item.
No.
Okay, it's the full range.
It is the full range.
So, that is why this one is being looked at without a bid.
Yes.
Because it's kind of like a construction project. If you look at everything that they are providing to bid this out, you would have to bid out every specific thing, like ordinance assistance, training, all of that.
Yes.
Would have to be separately bidded, and you probably would end up with something higher than what they're offering. Because they seem pretty efficient with what they're doing.
I, I think they are, I think they're A1. This is what they do, so, and we're lucky enough to have the main office in Troy, Michigan, so.
Councilmember Kibble.
So, when we finalize, pretty much get through the cycle of the entire community, do you, and at that point, or is it prior to that point that you're already kind of retracing because somebody moved or somebody put on a fixture that?
Yes, and again, that'll be up to HydroCorp to track all of that. I think depending on what they find in the homes would determine how often they get inspected. So, if it's a high priority or high hazard, obviously they're going to be inspected more. If they have a device that can be tested, they'll be also inspected more. If you, if you just have a irrigation system with a vacuum breaker on it, that will be every five years. So, if you look at the timeframe, you could obviously see that we will be re-inspecting some of those homes within this seven to eight-year period. And this seven, it would complete the city, but it doesn't mean we're, we're done. It's a continuous thing. It will continue on for, for, you know, as long as they require us to have a cross connection program, which they'll, you know, that is, that is forever.
So, is, are you given notice in the event that there's a problem in your, your house or?
Yep, so they, they do all of that, once they re-inspect, they'll, they'll send notices.
Do they do the actual mechanical?
No, they do, no, they will not, they will not test any of the devices. That would be up to, and we can provide or they can provide a group of plumbers that can do that. So, I can tell you to test a vacuum breaker on a sprinkler system, ranges from probably $70 to $90. And that would be every five years. If you look at an RPZ, which is required for the sump pumps that are water-powered, that is a RPZ, which needs to be tested every year, and that's going to be over $100 to have it tested. Anything like the hose bibs, those, they give four hose bibs. So, if they go around the home and they see that your hose bibs outside need a vacuum breaker, they'll supply four per household, just to get you in compliance.
All right, great.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this explanation topic, it says Eagle is more stringently enforcing the inspection of residential accounts in addition to commercial and industrial. The current program involves 244 commercial and industrial accounts. Who's doing those inspections?
We do those internally. So, we have two members, two operators that have gone to classes that inspect those. And we've always inspected those. So, in the beginning, around 2008, it was believed that doing commercial and industrial accounts was enough to please, back then it was DEQ. Over the past several years, they've made changes in the Clean Water Act. And now, they are including residencies and they're going to be enforcing it. So, we have to, we have to do this, Eagle's requiring it, it isn't our permit. So, as far as those commercial and industrial counts, that takes a lot of time for our operators. So, they will do this, but we decided to opt out because we know the businesses, we know where to look, and we're pretty efficient at it, but it still takes hours. We can spend hours in the high school alone going through every little cross connection or backflow preventer that's in that school, hours. And then, the paperwork, filling out the paperwork and making sure that those are tested. You have to keep track of them, so you're tracking them. We have a program, it's called SINTA. It's one of those bare minimum programs, and it is very time-consuming for, for our operators. So, when this, if, if this is approved, we'll need somebody to spearhead it or lead it as, on the, on the city side, and we do have a person that is interested in doing that. But, little, very little time, so he'll just go through to make sure that everything is complete and the inspectors are doing what they should do and, and doing as many as they should, so.
What, what is the evidence that non-podable water and other contaminants are getting into the water supply?
Well, there, that's what we don't want, so there shouldn't be any, but there has been. And Eagle, if you go on Eagle's website, there are, there are cities that have that issue. We don't and, and we don't want to see that, and that's why this cross connection program needs to be implemented. So, we're trying to avoid that, so, and it has happened. So, I think there was a city on the west side of the state that had an issue. And it, and it's, I mean, we're doing our best, we've been, I'm not saying lucky, I mean, to have a cross contamination. It may never happen. But with these, with this in place, we hope that, you know.
Okay, so the City of South Line's water supply is not being targeted because somewhere there has been some data points that have evidence that there have been water testing, when you test the water.
No.
Okay, something was falling outside the range.
No, so, so, no, our, our water is fine, our WQP, everything is fine on our water side. So, it's not like we're doing this because we found some contaminants in the water. No, we're trying to avoid any contaminants getting in our water that could contaminate the water supply.
Okay, and HydroCorp is going to be collecting data?
Yes.
Okay, so, are they going to hold that data? Or are they going to make copies of it and make it?
Well.
Who owns the data?
They will own the data, and we are able to purchase that data if we want to at the end of whatever. But, the data we're going to.
Okay, okay, stop. What do you mean when you say that we can purchase data where we are providing them?
Well, I, I guess.
The access to come into our homes.
We will have the data, we just won't have the program, if that makes sense. So, the data, we have to submit the data to Eagle. We will have the final data. It's the program that they're using that we will not be able to, I guess, keep. It's, it's their program. So, if, if we want to continue without them, we have an option to purchase that program. We just would have to continue on with, without their help.
Well, that's interesting, that gives them a certain level of security.
Sure it does, but they're, they're going to spend a lot of time and a lot, a lot of time, a lot of, this is not an easy task. This is hours and hours and hours of paperwork, making sure it's filed correctly, making sure the data is correct. And this is filed, this is actually, once a year, we will give this data to Eagle, and that report is signed by us, not HydroCorp. So, we have to make sure that's correct too. So, there is that responsibility that they have. I mean, they will spend a lot of time on this.
Steve, could I?
Thank you.
So, the data, the data that you're collecting, and the data we'll have access to, is it would say, for instance, here's this, this residential address, here's the violations that we found.
Yes.
We circled back on such and such a date, the violations were corrected.
Yes.
But you won't have the program if you decided not to do business with these folks.
Right.
That would reschedule that follow-up investigation.
We would not have, right, we would not have that. We would have to buy that, that, that program. So, the data, obviously, we, we need the data, we're going to need the data, and that will be supplied to us, and that's something that is reported to Eagle. So, we'll have to know the violations, and if there is a violation and there is an issue with the customer, I guess, remedying the violation, then, then it will come back to us. So, we would have to figure out how to get in that home.
Okay, so, the initial, the initial sample size is 480 houses the first year, 480 the second. How do you pick the 480s, is it just a random draw or what?
It was what they think they can accomplish. This first year is going to be difficult, our contract, if, if approved, starts 5.1. We have to get that ordinance in line, we have to make sure we can enforce that ordinance, and we have to look at our present cross connection program. That has to be approved by Eagle, so we know that could take up four to six, maybe eight weeks just for approval on that. So, they realize that, they deal with Eagle all the time, so that number is.
So, those are all predecessor activities, all need to be tied and put in place before this program can even start?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Kibble, did you have something?
In the event that they found an anomaly someplace, would you be able to get a chart that would kind of give you an understanding of what, what had taken place or what had needed to be addressed?
If they find a violation, they will let us know right away and will determine what that violation is and see. They are not going to look too deep. They're looking for backflow preventer or backflow devices is what they're looking for. They're making sure that they're in place, they're going to make sure that they've been tested. So, looking beyond that, no, they, they won't see that. We would see that as the water department and some of our testing we do.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell for the waiver of the bidding process. Any further discussion regarding that topic? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us on a roll call vote on that, please.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And I'll look for a motion on the, a second on the selection of HydroCorp to perform those activities. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of HydroCorp to perform residential cross connection inspections for the amount of $46,332 from line item 592.556.802 contractual services.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Again, we have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Kurtzwell. Do we have any further discussion regarding this? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this, please.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kibble? Kennedy?
Yes. Thanks a lot, Ron.
Thank you.
Move on to discussion of the budget this evening. Do we have any questions regarding the budget for this evening? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to address this either to Pat, maybe. And the question is, could you, because I'm getting a lot of questions, I just want to make sure we could address on the record what the millage rate is going to be.
Yes. So, in your, those updated, oop, if I don't knock this over tonight, sorry. Thank you. In the updated sheets from our council, from our budget meeting we had two weeks ago that you received with your council packet, there was an update with the millage rate based on final March border review numbers that were reviewed by Oakland County and then sent back to the City Clerk Treasurer. And so, those, that was updated, and let's see, on the millage valuation sheet, the total final number for the city's services is going to be 17.2050 with 12.0504 for general fund operations. And then, for our debt service with the road bond, that will be 4.9946.
Okay, that 17 number, is that number higher than last year's?
Lower.
It's lower?
Because of the headly rollback.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure it's out there, that we are not increasing the taxes in the city.
This, no, the, the millage rate is actually slightly lower due to the headly rollback.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Patricia? Councilmember Kibble.
Well, actually, it was just a thing about some projects that I, I had looked up. Well, actually, it was just a thing about some projects that I, I had looked up. You know, Paul had, had, had addressed this in the meeting, or I mean, in our packet, and I, it, I had forgotten the fact of some things that I thought might end up being helpful. The Andover Park in, by the, by the bridge, I think that would end up being a nice place to end up getting a park bench, wastebasket, dog thing. It, it wouldn't be very expensive, and I think that, you know, if you're at the end of a, a road on, on our bike path, it'd be nice to have someplace to end up catching your breath. And secondly, oh, Paul, you and I had had a conversation about, I think it was the Clark Crossing area where there, the part, the, the path goes through from your section, you know, to come into the section that's around.
That's where it connects to Princeton Street, or what?
Well, yes, but then it goes on to end up going out to the MST.
Oh, you're done with the other end, okay.
Yeah, so, but you had suggested that the, the south side of that fork in the, the path was something that the, I, I'm assuming it was Clark Crossing are the ones that you were saying they're maintaining that area?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, so I was hoping that we might end up being able to get some pollinator gardens on the south side of that, or I'm sorry, the, the north side of that, that whole corridor, and, you know, try to see if we can get something going over there.
Yes, and that was actually within this year's budget, so that still can be done. It's already been discussed with DPW.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
And the trail amenities that you talk about, there's already a budget item for trail amenities under account number nine seven eight. So that's for the Parks and Rec, which is one oh one, seven five one, nine seven eight. That'll actually have numbers in there to be able to put the benches and garbage cans and other amenities along certain sections of the trail.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
So we have identified all the, all the items, and what you have in your packet tonight, is, are the additional, are the changes in some of the pages that were recommended? And unless there's any other questions about that, we still have next meeting, potentially something can be adjusted, but we're planning on bringing this back before city council at the May twenty-seventh city council meeting for adoption.
Any other questions regarding the budget? Thank you very much, Patricia. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to, to speak, you have a two-minute time limit. Again, please state your name and address for the city clerk. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the manager's report with city manager Zelnick.
A few items I wanted to talk to council about this evening was the two thousand twenty-five road paving project for Eagle Heights is still scheduled to begin after June first, and will be still completed around Labor Day. We're in the process of scheduling the pre-construction meeting within the next few weeks, and we'll advise city council when we have that pre-construction meeting, and also when we'll have the second public informational meeting for those residents within that subdivision. The boardwalk project continues. I was out there today to look at the sections of the bridge. They're almost completed with the north section of that boardwalk, and they've already started doing welding work on that metal bridge that crosses over the creek. Somebody brought up conversations a while back regarding a citywide water softener. Ron Beeson and I have had discussions with our engineers, you know, preliminary numbers. You talk about a real inexpensive system is in the, you know, range of three to five million dollars. And after discussing it with HRC, we're talking about more like a fifteen million dollar system to treat three million gallons of water within the system, to bring it down to the number of grains that's needed, which is an estimate for a membrane and ion exchange system, which is pretty expensive, you know. And that estimate also includes, you know, discussion, the actual footprint necessary for, for that, as well as putting it in the building. It's quite an expensive system, and residents, you know, potentially would still have to have some sort of water softener within their, within their residence or business. And the last item was the police chief. Chief Baki had announced that he will be retiring. His last day is scheduled for July ninth, so we're in the process right now of getting things ready, to begin the process of posting, and then we'll be interviewing and hiring a new police chief. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Kibble?
Just a quick, a quick one. Lion Township had had, had talked, at least, as though they had a way to mitigate some of their irons and calcium and everything. I have no idea how that, what the outcome was. I mean, if it was worthy of the, the expenses that they paid or what. But do you have any understanding of what their situation is?
Yeah, and Ron and I have had conversations with our engineers and understand a little bit about their system, and they chose to do a particular type, a type of system where residents would still need to have a water softener within their houses that need to bring it down to even further amount. I think it was fifteen grains or something like that. That was the type of system that they chose to put in. After discussions with Ron Beeson, the superintendent, and our engineers, we don't feel that that would be the right system for the city of South Lyon, and that's why ours would be more expensive.
All right, well, thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if anybody has taken a look at the old physical therapy building over there on Pontiac Trail. You know, the landscaping out front is absolutely horrendous. The, the driveway, you can see from Pontiac Trail, has a huge, huge pothole.
Our ordinance officer has been in contact with them.
Okay, okay, want to check on that. And the next thing is Ronald Sweet Parkway. On Ronald Sweet Parkway, as you're traveling on it from Pontiac Trail to the right, there is the, the link fence, and there is a tree that has bent that fence, and the tree is going to fall. It's just a matter of time. You, you can't miss it. And that is, it looks like the tree is on the property of the manufactured home community. But I would, I wonder if somebody could take some time, walk that line, and get with those owners, and have them clean up the, the trees that are just absolutely dead. And this one in particular is very dangerous. It, it's just a matter of, before somebody, if you travel a Ronald Sweet Parkway, everybody knows this tree. And you can see the bent in the fence. So they're going to have to fix the fencing over there, too. And, and you know, and I don't want to hear this story, you know, that it's a manufactured community and they only have so, so much money. That, that may be what the residents are, but the, the owner of that property is a very multimillion dollar corporation. So they have money to go in there and clean up that, that line. So, anyway, I'm getting a lot of complaints on that. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other comments for city manager Zelnick? Okay. Move on to council comments for this evening, and we'll start with Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remind everyone that the A and E art exhibit featuring high school student artwork from both South Lyon East and South Lyon Classic runs from April twenty-eighth and through May sixteen in the atrium, right out here in city hall. The opening night reception is this Friday, May second, from six to eight. The public is welcome to attend. Also, about two weeks ago, we had our gutters replaced on our house, and Green Oak Gutter was the installer. They did a great job, great communication from the time of the estimate that we received in March to the date of install. Extremely professional staff and the installers. Additionally, about a week ago, a bird got stuck in one of the downspouts, and so what did I do? I called Green Oak Gutter and asked them if they could assist on the rescue because they had the equipment to pull out the, the screws to the gutters and, you know, help the bird. And they did. And they came and they released that gutter spout, and as a result, we have one more bird enjoying its freedom in the city of South Lyon. So I want to thank Randy over at Green Oak Gutter. Somebody said, well, how did the bird get down? Well, it's because we ordered large, larger gutters. We have six, six inch gutters now with the larger spout. So that's how the, the little bird got down in there. So thank you, Randy, over at Green Oak Gutter, and thank you. You are a great family-owned business, and I would highly recommend them. And last, I'd like to welcome to South Lyon Julie and Charles Craig. I met them last week. They are here from West Bloomfield, and they absolutely love being here and living in South Lyon. So I'd like to welcome two new residents to our city that are very happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kibble?
You know, I don't really have much, I'm just giddy that the weather has turned and, you know, we don't have to, I don't know. So I don't really have anything to offer.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended the Michigan Healthy Climate Conference, and I was able to talk with businesses and other elected officials, hearing about the state's economy and some great opportunities for our community. I'll be talking with the city manager to explore some of the options I discovered and see if materials should be sent out to the rest of council to discuss possibly. I wanted to offer congratulations to the Witch's Hat for obtaining a new beverage license, the new license that they acquired. Lets them serve spirits and craft cocktails. They've worked hard to obtain this new license and have rolled out some great, a great lineup of signature cocktails that they've created. Another business that I wanted to highlight was Masala Indian Kitchen. They've offered a lunch buffet as an option for the past two weekends, and from the response that they've seen in the community, it sounds like this weekend choice may be here to stay. For those interested in trying Indian cuisine, it's a great option to try dozens of options. So check out Masala Indian Kitchen on social media to learn more about any of their future buffet offerings and when that'll be available again in the future. And finally, it's the last council meeting before the twenty-first annual South Lyon Area Creek Cleanup and Earth Day event. It's going to be this Sunday, May fourth, from nine AM to one PM. There'll be a lunch at noon, provided by Tremena's Pizza of South Lyon. Volunteers interested in helping can meet at four hundred McMun Street, Michigan Seamless Tube and Pipe Company parking lot. It's a rain or shine event to conserve and protect our waterways. Volunteers will safely remove trash and debris from South Lyon Area Creek, streams, waterways, and roads around the city of South Lyon. It's a great volunteer event, and we've had some awesome sponsors that have come forward to really help put this event on every year. But this year, we've got even more sponsors than expected. South Lyon Area Boy Scout Troop two-two-eight, South Lyon Area Cub Scout PAC thirty-eight, the City of South Lyon Department of Public Works Storm Water Management Program, the City of South Lyon Water Department Well Hood Protection Program, Michigan Seamless Tube Pipe Company, Mr. and Mrs. Larry Ledbetter, Martin's Hardware, the Law Office of Julia Paquette, and Ms. Lydia Paquette, Vibe Credit Union, Tremena's Pizza South Lyon, The Witch's Hat Brewing Company, Comerica Bank, the Kensington Valley Civitans, and the South Lyon Area Democrats have all become sponsors this year. So thank you so much to all those sponsors, and we look forward to seeing all those volunteers this Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Moser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a couple of things. I wanted to say a thank you to Kelly Thera Baker for taking over the Memorial Day Parade. I know her mom did it for many, many years, and I'm just very pleased that she's come back again to, to do this parade with the VFW. And then second, the Saturday is the First Market, May third, ninety-two. There will be food trucks there. We have Whiskey Jack's BBQ, Brava Empanada, and Boy Coffee, and she is still trying to get a taco truck out there. So it is going to be a great, a great, great weekend. We've got a lot of things to do in town. So when you're done shopping at the market, the next day you go clean up the creek. Sounds like a great weekend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a reminder about a couple of events coming up in the next two weeks. The Downtown Ladies' Night will be held on Friday, May ninth, from five PM until nine PM. In addition to the Farmer's Market on each Saturday from nine AM till two PM, there'll also be a food truck rally as part of the market on Saturday, May tenth, and every second Farmer's Market throughout the season. Also taking place on Saturday, May tenth, will be the first youth entrepreneur market of the season, and please make a point to stop by and see the great products they have for sale. This will be held in the grassy area next to Big B Coffee there on Pontiac Trail. And finally, on Saturday, May tenth, and Sunday, May eleventh, Furry Friends Rescue will be collecting returnable bottles and cans in the Pet Supplies Plus parking lot from eleven AM until three PM. So now's a great time to clean out the basement or garage and drop off your returnables to help this great organization with their, with their efforts there. And normally, at this point, we would be looking for a motion to adjourn, but tonight I'm going to be looking for a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to recess into closed session to consider two attorney-client privileged communications in accordance with MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight one H.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Kurtzwell, a second from Councilmember Moser. Any further discussion? City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us on a roll call, vote on this one, please.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. And so at this point, we will close the, the meeting and ask all those who are not involved in the closed session to exit the room, and any decisions made will be recorded following entry back into the open session at the end of the closed session.